Okay, now we're gonna do something fun. We are going to go to honors and achievements and we're gonna ask Dr. Little to step down and present certificates.
Madam Chair, before I step down, I would, before I step down to honor our staff and students, I'd like to take a point of privilege to make just a few comments. January is National School Board Recognition Month. I'm also having a hard time speaking. A time to celebrate our Board of Trustees and their service to this district. The theme of this year's celebration is "Local Voice: People's Choice" and highlights the fact that our school boards are elected by Lexington County School District One residents. These voters choose high-quality individuals to ensure the success of the schools that their students attend. The seven individuals before you advocate for quality schools and equitable public education across the district and make sure that each child has the same opportunity for success no matter where they live in our district. They work as a team to set policy that allows us to manage the present and map the future for Lexington District One. They attend an endless string of meetings and school functions, read and study countless reports, agendas, and proposals, and make a host of difficult decisions. They give freely of their personal and professional time to better sacrifice, to better our schools, and they receive no monetary compensation for their sacrifice. Considering this district occupies 48 percent of the county's 750 square miles and stretches from the banks of Lake Murray to the county's southern border with Aiken County, that is a real sacrifice. It becomes even more impressive when you realize that the district serves more than 26,000 pre-K through grade 12 students and employs nearly 4,000 employees, not including substitutes, and maintains 30 schools, an adult education program, an alternative learning program, a full-service cafeteria program, and a fleet of more than 160 buses. They volunteer to do, to do this, and they make a four-year commitment because they believe it is the right thing to do. So tonight, on behalf of the students, employees, and parents of Lexington District One, I would like to say thank you for your service to the district and empowering each student to design the future. So please join me in expressing appreciation to Board Chair Cindy Smith, Vice Chair Anne Marie Green, Secretary Dr. Brett Powers, members Mike Anderson, Jada Garris, Dr. Kyle Guyton, and Tim Oswald.
And now I will go down front.
While he's walking, I'll walk you through the process. We celebrate successes of many kinds during the honors and achievements portion of our monthly board meeting. We recognize the significant achievements of our students and employees as well as the contributions and partnerships with our business partners and community organizations. Tonight's honorees include elementary state honor choir singers, national board-certified teachers, grant winners growing our fine arts offerings, and many others. We feature all of this in Proof Positive, let me find my copy, which is right here. And if you did not pick one up when you signed in tonight, please do so on your way out. They make a great keepsake for our honorees and their families. In fact, you're welcome to take extra copies if you feel led. You should know that if you try to follow along in the newsletter tonight, you might need to skip back and forth from page to page, that it's not always in the same order as the presentations. And finally, we ask that you stay until the, till the very end so that we can recognize all of our recipients, and then at that point, we will give you a few minutes to step out unless you feel led to continue the night with us, because we will, we will be up here staying on course. And Dr. Little is already down, so when you hear your name, we want you to come up and stand with Dr. Little, and he likes to take pictures, so we're gonna take some pictures. Well, the first one is an exciting one. We begin tonight with Lexington High senior Ally Richardson, competing as one of 27. And I love her crown. Competing as one of 27 contestants from across the state, Ally won the Miss South Carolina Teen USA 2019 Pageant. She plans to use her time representing South Carolina to bring awareness to the issues surrounding depression, a cause close to her heart. Ally serves as Lexington High's Student Body Vice President and the National Honor Society Chapter Officers. We will cheer her on as she journeys on to Miss Teen USA this summer, so we are all excited. We want her to, go Ally!
We were practicing the wave.
Oh. Well, show him how to take a good picture, Ally. Thank you, Ally. Okay, now this is exciting, too. Two robotics teams from Meadow Glen Middle used ingenuity to get into the winner's circle this season. The Gator Gears team consists of all female competitors. So when I call your name, please join Dr. Little. First of all, we'd like to call up Sidney Davis, Sachi Lal, Hira Panchal, Serena Patel, Anouska Sharma, Celeste Sullivan, and Rebecca Yu. I just, I love their shirts and their bandanas, they look so cute. The team earned a trip to the international tournament by finishing, by finishing second in the race for the South Carolina First LEGO League Champions Award at the state tournament. And where will that international trip be?
Arkansas.
Oh, fun. Knowing their robot would need to complete multiple missions during competition, the Gator Gears used a front-loading attachment system for efficiency. Okay, now the ladies had that, their turn, let's give the gentlemen a turn. A second Meadow Glen team brought home a trophy from the state tournament, the Robo-Gators, won first place for Best Mechanical Design. The Robo-Gators include Sam Concilla, Drew Carter, Aiden Keenan, Rattish Corapati, Ritvik Corapati, Ryan Paraday, and a Rob, Rastagoji. Did I get them pretty close? No, I must not have. The boys didn't stop making changes to their robot until it could operate at a high level. They scored big points with the judges for the final robot, which balanced speed, accuracy, and power. Congratulations to both the ladies and the gentlemen for these wonderful robotics. Oh, yes, and we'd like to congratulate the coaches for both of those teams, too, and thank you for coming tonight as well. We're now gonna move to the choir room, and we're going to recognize a group of talented elementary singers. Sixteen Lexington District One students successfully auditioned for and made a statewide choir organized by the South Carolina Music Educators Association. They are part of the Elementary Division Honor Choir. Those earning a spot include Deerfields Elementary Madden Campbell, is Madden here? There she is. Chloe Espinson, she's from Deer, did I say that correctly, close enough? Lexington Elementary's Gavin Boozer, Olivia Ketchum, and Ava King. Meadow Glen Elementary's Elena Goveas, 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 thank you. Midway Elementary's Taylor Glover and Morgan Nesmith. New Providence Elementary's Sophia Bates and Camila Uresta. Pleasant Hill Elementary's Roman Evans. Rocky Creek, Rocky Creek Elementary's Olivia Redden. And White Knoll Elementary's Ally Kit, Grace Kwaku, Alan Moore, and Kate Schnabel. This group of students is the largest group of elementary honor choir members the district has ever had. As a testament to their hard work, these students will sing at the South Carolina Music Educators Association Professional Development Conference in February. And we are so proud of all of you for making this choir. I don't know if you know this, but Dr. Little's father is a music teacher, so music is near and dear to his heart. And he, he might sing a little bit, too.
I'm not gonna do that. We got a lot of people here, y'all are very famous, you gotta smile.
Our next group of students served as South Carolina ambassadors this fall during the International Day of the Girl Child. The Grace, Peace, and Sisterhood Group includes Lexington Middle's Jamesy Davis and Jamie Johnson. Are they here? Meadow Glen Middle's Sarah Bennett, Jasmine Clark, Alana Singleton, Sidney Smith, and Leila Trapp were part of that group. And Riverbluff High's Tamisha Young represented Riverbluff. We would like to invite Lexington Middle School Counselor Stacy Clark and co-leader Dominique Sawyers, Sawyer, School Counselor at Meadow Glen Middle School, as well as Dr. Toby Jenkins-Henry. Dr. Jenkins-Henry, Associate Professor of Instruction and Teacher Education at the University of South Carolina, is here tonight as well. She actually selected the Grace, Peace, and Sisterhood Group to represent South Carolina at the United Nations Girls Speak Out Summit. Let's thank them for all their work with this organization. Okay, looking ahead to our exciting summer camps, let us bring up Michelle Lucas, career special at Lexington Technology Center. Michelle, here? Oh, there she comes, she was hidden behind all the photographers. She represents district career specialist Julie Rocheck tonight, since Julie could not be with us. She is here? No. Ms. Rocheck obtained a $1,500 grant from Fabricators and Manufacturers Association International to offer a second year of the Nuts, Bolts, and Thingamajigs Summer Camp at the Technology Center. Twenty campers participated last year, learned how much manufacturing jobs have changed in recent years, heard from guest speakers across manufacturing, and took field trips to our local industries. We thank Mrs. Rocheck and Mrs. Lucas for working hard to continue this opportunity for our Now, we proudly recognize teachers who earn, for the first time, or renewed for another time, their national board certification. Before we bring them up, let me tell you a little bit about this achievement. Created by teachers, this certification process uses national board standards, allows fellow teachers to review applications, and takes into account multiple factors of effective instruction. Candidates must reflect on their classroom methods and their mastery of subject material as well as submit an extensive portfolio with videos of teaching, lesson plans, and student work samples. As you can see, these teachers put quite a lot of work to secure, put in quite a lot of work to secure this certification. First, we want to take a photograph of our teachers earning their certification for the first time. Those first timers include Lake Murray Elementary's Kristen Bodmer, is she here? And Gillian Stratton. Meadow Glen Middle's Cliff Roberts, Mr. Roberts here? Pelearon High's Ashton Paget. Pelearon Middle's Shelley Martin. Pleasant Hill, Pleasant Hill Elementary's Donna Spivey and Erica Swetman. And Riverbluff High's Emeline Lewis and Andrea Moore. Congratulations to these first timers. Teachers renewing their certification with us tonight include Carolina Springs, Carolina Springs Elementary's Misty Johnson, Misty here? Gilbert Elementary's Heather Gresham. Gilbert Primary's April Mendenhall and Debbie Oswald, you might notice the last name of a board member up here that might know Ms. Oswald. Lexington Elementary's Mary Ashley Rodriguez. Lexington High's Sherry Corley, Dana Crowley, and Kimberly Watson. Lexington Middle's Patricia Lampel. Lexington Technology Center's Esther Abney. Meadow Glen Elementary's Jamie Sox. Meadow Glen Middle's Luda Hutchison. Midway Elementary's Tammy Sharp. New Providence Elementary's Gregory Blashka and Haley Lamarche. Pelearon Elementary's Chris Pratt and Ruth Ann Treister. Pelearon High's Tracy Holcomb and Gwendolyn Wingard. Pleasant Hill Middle's Shannon Kennedy, Lori McKelvey, and Steve Woodyard. Riverbluff High's Carly Myers, Kenzie Neer, Carolyn Newt. White Knoll Elementary's Katie Harmon and Jennifer McPherson. And White Knoll Middle's Deborah Adams, Stephanie Blackman, Deidra Foot, Candace Let, and Marlene Neal. And before, wait, before you give applause for these, I just want to stress to you the amount of work our teachers do to get this certification and to renew this certification. And it, it is, just benefits our children so much, so we just want to thank you for all the work behind these certifications. Deerfield Elementary celebrated earning lighthouse school status this past December. Deerfield, Deerfield joined the global Franklin Covey, The Leader in Me, Lighthouse School Network after three years using the proven leadership model and conducting a self-evaluation. To achieve this impressive goal, they crafted a leadership environment that challenges and supports student growth, taught and reinforced the seven habits, and invited students to take on meaningful leadership roles. Tonight, we want to congratulate two teams who put in extra hours to make this achievement possible, the Student Lighthouse Team and the Staff Lighthouse Team. First, our Student Lighthouse Team, we'd like for you to come forward, is Taiwan Austin, Leila Bateman, Caleb Leaky, Ansley McLendon, and Malia Price. So let's thank these students for serving as leaders at Deerfield Elementary School. Now, do y'all, do you want the students to stand to the side so they can get a picture with the staff, too? Okay, so if y'all are just kinda, which, which way? Okay, now we're gonna call up the staff. We're gonna call up Olga Brown, Brian French, Lacey Henson, Kelly McIlwain, Bethany Petto, Haley Prickett, Beth Tester, Shanika Waring, Alice Wilson, Principal Jan Malone, and Assistant Principals Adam Diamond and Kelly Middleton. So y'all all come up, we'll take a staff picture and then we'll take a blended picture. Has it got a lot of money in it? Okay, now we have two schools returning us after receiving additional grant funding in the arts. Let's bring up our grant writers from Pleasant Hill Middle, I think this is your third trip up here, so Ms. Shannon Kennedy, Lori McKelvey, Jessica Robbins, and Mickey Summerall, and White Knoll Middle, Deborah Adams, and Jolene Walter. These schools received arts and basic curriculum grants to continue providing excellent arts education and experiences. Okay, y'all get ready, because these are some great numbers. Pleasant Hill Middle received $11,000 in grants, and White Knoll Middle received $8,500 in grants, so let's. With these designated funds, schools can invite artists and residents, provide professional development for their art department teachers, and include resources for arts education and core subject areas. Thank you so much for working so hard to obtain these grants for your staff and students, because this is definitely going beyond, so thank y'all, we appreciate you guys. We always enjoy recognizing our schools and staff for what they do to promote inclusion. Would Aletha Corley from Lake Murray Elementary come forward? Is she here? She recently helped our, her school obtain funding for Special Olympics activities. As a unified champion school, Lake Murray provides opportunities for students with and without intellectual disabilities to play sports together and build friendships. The school received $400 to use for transportation and sports equipment, as well as to purchase resources to further advocate for unified champion participants. We want to thank Ms. Corley for advocating for her students. Okay, I don't think it will be difficult to find an extra chaperone for this next event. Forts Pond Elementary's Leslie Burnett received a Target Field Trip Grant to carry on a sweet and sticky tradition with students. The $700 grant covers the cost of a field trip to Sease Strawberry Farm. This field trip gives all Forts Pond first graders an opportunity to experience firsthand the life cycle of a strawberry. Students learn about strawberry production, enjoy a hayride out to the fields, and even pick a bucket of berries to take home. Thank you for ensuring this fun and educate, and that this educational tradition continues. Now, we're gonna move on to the Walmart Foundation Community Grant Program. A tradition of exciting student performances will continue at Carolina Springs Middle. Theater arts teacher Jennifer Simmons received a Walmart Foundation Community Grant allowing students to bring stories to life on stage. The $1,000 grant covers production costs, includes materials for sets and props, costumes, fabric, and more. Funding directly benefits more than 200 theater students, as well as other students, parents, and community members who attend the shows. We salute Ms. Simmons for choosing reusable materials that students can use for years to come. Congratulations, and we look forward to the next show. Is she here, Ms. Simmons? And we also want to say a thank you to Walmart. This is one of our favorite times, we get to invite Ms. Julie Washburn, who is our Executive Director of the Lexington District One Educational Foundation, to introduce repeat guests who we always love having join us, Michelin and W. P. Ross. I'm gonna turn it over to you, Ms. Washburn.
Thank you, Dr. Little. I appreciate the assistance. Thanks for having me here this evening, and it's exciting for all of you who are award winners. And we're gonna, I think, wrap up the award section with the foundation awards that we're very grateful to be able to announce periodically here at the Board of Trustees meetings. Before we begin, though, I do want to acknowledge the generosity of Michelin itself. The Lexington Plant is extremely generous to the Educational Foundation and to our district in a variety of ways. In addition to providing grants twice a year to our teachers, they also have funded a STEM lab at Meadow Glen Middle School. They support foundation events on a regular basis. They serve as mentors, their employees, at Red Bank and Saxgatha Elementary Schools. And then they also, most recently, gave a huge $30,000 robotics grants to the foundation to support five of our teams in the district. So they continue to be amazing corporate partners, and we're very grateful for their continued generosity in that regard. But I want to introduce Claude Lightsey, he is actually here to represent Michelin tonight. He is technically the area personnel manager, but serves as the Golden Apple Administrator for Michelin. And he and I work closely together to receive grant applications, but Claude has the joy of making decisions on those and awarding the grants twice a year. But these are biannually, they're up to $250 given to teachers who apply for innovative educational programs, and they're things kinda outside of the norm that give opportunities to their students. So they're, they're great experiences for our kids and result in a huge benefit to them. So I'm gonna have Claude come up and actually announce the award winners, and Dr. Little and I are gonna get to congratulate them.
Thank you, Julie. Pleasure to be here tonight in this room, what a, what a room this is, and what a, what a parade of progress and excitement from all of these students and teachers here, showing their, their efforts and being recognized for it. It's just marvelous to be here. I am here to award these, these Michelin apple, Golden Apple teacher grants, and it's, it's for teachers who have shown insight and taken the initiative to try to bring innovation into their classroom, and that's something that we really appreciate in Michelin, and I'm thrilled to be a part of that recognition for these, these teachers and for what they are trying to do to make improvements in their, in their classroom, to improve the learning environment. So I would like to start, if you would just come up, and we will, we will recognize you and pose for pictures here all together as a group. To start with, Amber Bible from the Alternate Educational Services, her project is Amber, Amber here? Her project was about student recognition and reinforcing positive behaviors and academic results. The next person is Deborah The next person is Deborah Markalini. Deborah here? Hi, Deborah. She is from Lexington Elementary. Her, her subject was reading, and she has purchased books, plans. Decrease my volume here. Increase the classroom library inventory. Next is Eliana Soto. Eliana? No? Eliana has a, had a foreign, has a foreign language skills project to enhance language with authentic cultural materials. Next is Jamie Blakely from Oak Grove Elementary. Jamie here tonight? All right, Jamie's project had to do with, oh, there's Jamie? Very good. Her project was surrounding reading and matching just-right level nonfictional reading material for the students. Next is Katie Alexander from Pelearon Elementary. Katie's project was, subject was mathematics, and her project was to bring online math resource to the classroom in a website. Next is Lee Johnson from Pleasant Hill Elementary. Is Lee here? Lee's project was in mathematics, incorporating math into other subjects for cross-discipline approach. Very good. Next is Rocky Burns from Red Bank Elementary. Rocky's project was to improve recess equipment access and storage, to improve the ability, the access and storage of the, of the equipment needed for recess. So, very good. Next is Paige Jurgensen from Rocky Creek Elementary. Paige's project was portable seating in the classroom to improve the engagement through allowing students to move and group together in learning groups. Next is Kim Lewis from Saks Gothas Elementary. Kim's project was, had to do with social skill building, educational games, and social skill building activities. Next is Don Serenzen. Comes Don, from White Knoll Elementary. His, his grant was in mathematics, teaching mathematics with balloons. Okay, yes. Got to have fun in the classroom, too. The next is Suzanne Brooks from White Knoll Middle. Suzanne? There she is. Hers was surrounding math skills with Legos, using Legos to increase engagement with hands-on incentives. And finally, Russ Conrath from White Knoll Middle. Russ's project was also in reading, purchasing books to read and to discuss in groups. So, these are 12 of our, our teachers who have taken the time out to propose new ideas and to write up a grant, and they are recipients to, to bring innovation to the classroom. And these 12 instructors, teachers, they are bringing effects to over 1,500 students, according to their, to their grants and their efforts. So, let's give them a hand.
I'm also very pleased to have one more group of awards to recognize tonight. Another very loyal corporate supporter of the foundation is the W.P. Rawls Company and its family, the Rawls Family. Normally, I would introduce Susan Clifton to join us tonight, but unfortunately, she had a death in the family, and she said to please send her regrets, especially to the award winners here tonight, that she wouldn't personally be able to be here and present these, but asked me to present these on her behalf. But these grants are actually awarded twice a year as well. They're grants that were originally intended to enhance a student's knowledge of diet and nutrition through a live garden or other type of plant project. And I think the teachers and the schools have been very innovative in the ways they've used the funds. It's brought some beauty to the schools, as well as some educational experiences for our students. They actually give away each semester, basically, $500 to basically create a new garden, or $250 to sustain an existing garden. But in addition, the, the company has a family scholarship named in honor of Susan's parents. So, they, they continue to be supportive. Their children, many of the Rawls Company members themselves have grown up in Lexington and been educated here. So, we definitely appreciate their continued support of the foundation and our district as a whole. But I'm going to actually have the joy now of recognizing the award winners. So, if y'all would, please, when I recognize you, just come up, and we're going to, Dr. Little, you passing out certificates? Thank you. Okay, our first award winner is Barbara Johnson with the Alternative Educational Services. Focus. She has a court, Barbara has a courtroom garden that's going to fund a new vegetable garden in an area that's really been neglected in the school. The kids will be involved, or the students, rather, not children, I guess, will be involved in planting and harvesting and keeping the, the garden beautiful for the individuals around there to use it. And with Carolina Springs Elementary, Anna Faust. If she is here tonight, if she would join us. Or her garden actually is to sustain one that's already existing within the school, and it's particularly geared towards the special education students. They're going to plant fruits, vegetables, and herbs, and have peer buddies that work with the students. So, a neat idea there. If Lizzie Seisloff is here with Forts Pond, is Lizzie here this evening? They actually want a grant to sustain a garden that's currently exist and that will support the STEM classes. It's actually classes using the Garden STEM Lesson and Curriculum Planning Guide. They're going to build a mini greenhouse, which will allow them to plant things, not only when it's January and nothing grows outside, but to be able to use it year-round. So, that'll be a huge benefit to the school and to the students. If Jean McKinney is here from Meadow Glen Elementary School? Is Jean here? She won a garden grant for a new garden, actually, to create it for the school. In addition, Casey Davis is the co-leader. Is Casey here? But this garden will present unique learning opportunities for the school, and the kids will, will work directly in actually a four-bed garden area, and with, will plant edible plants, and it will be cultivated by the third through fifth graders. So, neat experience for them. Is Erica Schumpert here with New Providence Elementary? Erica actually has a grant for sustaining a garden, and the Little Green Thumbs group of students, which are second or fifth graders, will actually work in the garden. They will have direct access to plants most of the year and learn about, not only gardening, but can use it for math and other types of areas, educational areas. How about Christopher Johnson with Pelearon Middle School? Is Chrissy? Okay. Won a grant for a new garden at PMS, and they will, his class, he's the agricultural science teacher, but they'll work with the after-school program to build a new garden in one of their courtyards, and it will provide a place for teachers to hold class and to allow students to read in that area as well. Will include vegetables and fruit-bearing plants, as well as flowers. And to create a beautiful and useful courtyard space. With Saks Gothas Elementary, is Lee here? Lee won a garden grant that fourth-grade students will get to benefit from. They're actually going to grow a variety of foods. We'll see if you kids like all these things. Collard greens, and radishes, and kale, and broccoli. So, they're going to do some fun things, and the, the grant will also be used to purchase things that they need to, to basically go in and get weeds out, you know, to keep the garden beautiful, too. So, trowels, hose, knee pads, and aprons. So, we want to congratulate all of our winners of these seven grants. About 1,300 students will benefit from them. So, it has a large impact, and we greatly appreciate the Rawls Family and the company supporting us in this way, so.
While they're taking their pictures, the board would just like to recognize Michelin, and we would like to recognize W.P. Rawls. This is just a small piece of what they do for Lexington One. Michelin has a mentoring program, and they actually work one-on-one with some of our students. They also have provided money for STEM labs and for our robotics teams. And then, the W.P. Rawls Family, they work closely with our Future Farmers of America Program, and it just takes, it takes a partnership, and we really appreciate Claude, what you do, and what the Rawls Family does for us. And Julie, thank you for bringing that to our attention. So, let's give them a big round of applause. Well, we want to thank you for taking the time to be with us tonight, and we just want to thank all of you for all you're doing to make Lexington One so successful. We're so proud of each and every one of you. Honorees, if you, when you leave the meeting, head to your left and out in the main lobby, where a member of our communications office will actually give you your certificate, and you are invited to stay. But if you'd like to step out, we'll give you a few minutes to step out, and thank you once again for coming.